Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I call to order the February 8th, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, well, this evening I have the distinct pleasure and honor of issuing a proclamation on behalf of Black History Month, and we have two distinguished guests with us this evening, representatives from the Community Foundation of San Carlos, Camelia Pham and Linda Kendrick Burrows. And Linda Kendrick Burrows will be receiving this proclamation on behalf of the city. Linda Burrows has been a San Carlos resident for 25 years. She has worked with nonprofit and philanthropic organizations ranging from special needs children and adults to international non-governmental organizations and corporate community relations for over 30 years. Linda is a seasoned community advocate, board member, and entrepreneur, and we're very pleased to have them with us this evening. And with that, I'd like to read this proclamation. To declare and celebrate February 2021 as Black History Month. Whereas African Americans have played a significant role in our nation's history, and whereas since 1976, Black History Month has been observed nationally, to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments Black Americans have made and continue to offer this nation. And whereas Black History Month is an occasion to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation and to rediscover the enduring stories of African Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on future generations. And whereas it is also a time to commemorate the countless contributions of African Americans, many of whom have lived through and surmounted the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. Their examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise have given the people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. And whereas the city of San Carlos is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city of good living. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Laura Palmer Lohan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby declare and celebrate the month of February 2021 as Black History Month throughout the city of San Carlos and urge our community to join together to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty presented this eighth day of February 2021. Thank you so much. And now I would like our distinguished guests to have the floor for a few moments if they'd like to make any remarks.
I think Linda might be having some trouble with audio, so maybe I can start, and then...
Please, Camelia. And then we'll go to Linda.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor Palmer Lohan and City Council members. It is such a great honor to receive this proclamation alongside with Ms. Linda Kendrick, an outstanding San Carlos community member. On behalf of the Community Foundation of San Carlos and as Chair of the Racial Justice Committee, I deeply appreciate the acknowledgement to intentionally celebrate the brilliant contributions of the Black and African American community, its American culture and history. As of today, the foundation is proud to commemorate this month with a banner displayed across Laurel Street. Many thanks to our foundation president, Jessica Yang, for single-handedly designing it. During this month and beyond the month of February, the Community Foundation is committed to launching a series of projects and events that celebrate and amplify Black history, culture, and accomplishments. These initiatives consist of infusing inspirational artwork throughout our community, such as murals and postcard contests, as well as launching a learning series of resources such as a 21-day racial equity challenge. All of these materials can be found on our website, and we're excited to share. We are grateful for this opportunity to collaborate with the city, City Council members, city staff, vibrant high school students from Sequoia and Carlmont High School, local nonprofits, community members, as we continuously develop these ideas. And we invite anyone from our community who's interested to reach out and join us on this important work. Thank you to all City Council members and to you, Mayor Laura Palmer Lohan.
Great, thank you, Camelia. Linda Kendrick Burrows, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I would like to extend my thanks to Madam Mayor and the City Council. I am honored to be able to accept the proclamation on behalf of the community. I would also like to extend my utmost respect and appreciation for the San Carlos Community Foundation for setting the pace for other communities to follow by amplifying the need for a more comprehensive story of our history and to encourage San Carlos to be the city that embraces diversity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And at this point, if any of my fellow council members would like to make a few remarks? Councilmember Rack?
I just want to thank the mayor for issuing this proclamation, and thank you to Linda and Camelia for all your work in the community, and I look forward to working with you in the future and hope that we have a good opportunity to celebrate Black History Month among our community and to participate in many of the events that are planned.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rack. And Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to say that something I've said most of my life, and that is the one thing I've never understood, is intolerance and prejudice and racism. I'm one of those few people, I suppose, that grew up in a household devoid of that, even though my father was raised in the deep south. And so my point is that all of those things need to be taught, and so we need to teach everyone that we come in contact with, especially our children, and now my grandchild, that there is no room in our world for those kinds of behaviors. And so I hope that this month is, once again, a great example, and I wish it was every month of the year, but it's a great example of the progress that we still have to make in this world. So anyway, I just want to congratulate Linda and again, and everyone that is coming tonight to receive this proclamation, and we do so proudly.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, that was just very well said, Ron and everyone else, and how does that go? Just glad we're pausing for a moment as a city and recognizing the importance of this. And I'm just glad we've made this effort, and I share everyone's thought that they should be an active focus and area of concern of all of ours. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to you, Madam Mayor, for doing this, and thank you so much to the Community Foundation for really paving the way for our community and taking the lead on this. And I also wanted to thank Linda for all of her wonderful service in our community. She's been a real pillar in our community, so thank you both. Camelia, great presentation tonight, too, and please go check out the Community Foundation's website. There's a lot of wonderful resources there, so thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, that'll move us to our next agenda item, Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to report out?
Through the chair, I'll just say that last week I had my first airport roundtable meeting, and I have nothing useful to report back on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just let the community know that we, as everyone knows, we rolled out a shop-local campaign over the holidays, and I had a chance to speak with several business owners downtown over the weekend. And while December, our retailers were kind of able to break even, January's been another really tough month, as was fall. And unfortunately, several of our downtown businesses are facing increases in their rent because we started a new year, and our retailers are serving at 25% capacity, and our restaurants are just getting back on their feet. So I just wanted to ensure that the community is mindful that even though the holidays are behind us, it's just as important as ever to continue to shop locally. We have Valentine's Day coming up soon, so you could buy your gifts downtown, you know, anywhere in San Carlos. We have so many businesses to choose from, and it's just really important that we continue to support and shop and dine locally. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Liz?
Yes, the only thing I have to report is I also had a first meeting of sorts, a first meeting as a member of the Silicon Valley Clean Water Board last week. Not much happened, but I expect to have some pretty exciting things to report as that commission meets on a regular basis.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our Council Communications and Announcements. At this point, we'll move to public comments. So persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to the staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, is there anyone from the public wishing to make a comment?
I do not see any hands raised. Oh, we do have one. I'll go ahead and admit her in. Good evening, Sonia.
Hi.
You should be... Oh, there you go.
Hold on, I have to find my... Thank you for taking my public comment. I do have a comment for later on a different agenda item, but I wanted to also say that I just wanted to put out there that I think the City Council and Public Works have an extremely valuable asset in our Transportation Commission. The members of the public whom our council is appointed to give Public Works a better sense of the transportation needs of our public, who are the primary street users in the town. Our Transportation Commissioners are knowledgeable, they're dedicated, they have a strong desire to help our city, but they are underutilized. They're in the perfect position to interface with the public, to collect ideas and get input on the transportation plans that Public Works is working on, and they can communicate the public perspective back to our Public Works Department, to our traffic engineers. But these conversations do not regularly happen. I really, really want to trust that Public Works has the interest of all street users at heart when they come up with their designs, and I know that they have them at heart. But I have concerns that time and time again, the street designs are reading like a zero-sum game where bicycles needs will match, or the pedestrians' needs will match, or the drivers' needs will match, but there's a very fatalistic feel to many of the designs that I'm seeing come out as though they've perhaps resigned themselves that some group will have to be sacrificed, and so just lower their heads and push through anyway. But I really want to say that's not what compromise is about. Each interest group does need to give something up and gain something in return, and I think we can work through this. I'd like to propose that a smoother, less costly, and more effective approach to street design can happen when we promote conversations between the public and especially with our knowledgeable transportation commissioners, not necessarily the staff and the public, but the commissioners. The truly inspired ideas that come out of our Public Works Department were the result of our greatest level of collaboration, not with one team with limited vision forging ahead despite serious concerns. So thank you for taking my comment. I just wanted to really push for how we can get our Transportation Commissioners more actively involved because they are an extraordinarily valuable resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, are there any other members of the public wishing to make a comment?
No, no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, so the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Through the chair, I would like to pull item G briefly.
Okay, so is that... So... All right, so we'll maybe entertain the motion to address the other items and then discuss that one briefly.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through F.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to pause for a moment. Item G is the appointment of Shannon Bergman as, I believe, a voting alternate to our EDAC committee. And I just wanted to pause for a minute and just congratulate Shannon on all of her years of public service to San Carlos. She had six years on our City Council, I'm sorry, six years on our Planning Commission, and she was actually the most senior member of the Planning Commission when I first joined, and I just saw firsthand her hard work and dedication, and most of all, how much she cared for San Carlos. And so I'm just very happy she's finding a new role. She turned out after six years on the Planning Commission, and so I wholeheartedly welcome her to EDAC and hope that opens up a new chapter for her service. And early in her career, she also served four years in the Army, and so just really congratulate Shannon on all of her dedicated public service over the years. And with that, I will move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Item G.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please, Crystal.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, thank you. So that moves us to Agenda Item 8, Reports to Council. Reports to Council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and City Council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So I believe, Jeff, you will be presenting on this item, if I'm not mistaken?
I will. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight's presentation will be brief. We just have one update for you. This was touched upon at our recent 2+2 committee meeting with the two council members and two school board members. The school district informed us that they've been able to work with their vendor Curative to open a COVID-19 testing site at Central Middle School. That'll be open every Thursday from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's walk-up for children or adults. They need to make appointments with Curative. The website's listed here. It's www.curative.com, and enter the San Carlos location, or you can visit the city's website at www.cityofsancarlos.org and look for the COVID-19 testing news item on the homepage, which has a direct link to schedule appointments. In addition to this, the city is talking with Curative about how we might take over the testing location in the future if and when Central reopens down the road and testing is still needed in our community. We're looking to be able to move the site to another location if and when that happens. So we'll stay tuned and keep you posted and the community posted on that if any changes happen to the program. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. It appears we have a question from Vice Mayor McDowell.
I just wanted to make a quick comment and say that it's such a wonderful resource to have this in our community. I went down to the van last Thursday and got tested. I received my results in a day and a half. It's free, you don't have to have symptoms, and I was in and out in under five minutes. So it could not have been easier. It's much easier than driving to the San Mateo sites. So I'm just super grateful to the school district for bringing this tremendous resource to our community, and I'm happy to hear that the city is thinking long-term about where this could go if and when Central reopens. So thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, so I don't see any other comments at this time. So we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is Agenda Setting. Items listed in this Agenda Setting section will be considered by the council for placing on a future agenda. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Under consideration is consider agendizing a discussion on the pedestrian enhancement project at Arroyo Cedar and Hemlock Orange Pathway C1743 and providing staff with alternate direction to the design. And I believe we would take public comment at this time. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, so Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
Yes, it does look like we have two at this time. I'll go ahead and admit Elaine Salinger. Elaine, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, I can, thank you so much. So I am a bike advocate and avid cyclist. I'm 67 years old, have two replacements, and love to cycle. I firmly believe that when people feel safe, they will get on their bikes and get out of their cars. And I really would like to suggest that council members and people at the Works Department actually cycle through the areas that they are involved with and designing. So I would like to ask that the proposed construction at the intersection of Cedar and Arroyo Avenue be bike-friendly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine. Crystal, anyone else?
Yes, looks like David Tom. David, you should be able to unmute now.
Great, thanks, Crystal. Hi, this is David Tom. My family and I live on the corner of Arroyo and Cedar, and I'm speaking in favor of adding this agenda item. Even if the Arroyo-Cedar project moves forward as currently planned, I would like to see further discussion regarding the following questions. First, can the project be improved even after construction is finished to better emphasize the safety of cyclists? For example, by indicating where bikes should travel by use of painted lane markings and additional signage? Second, has the city sufficiently studied the impact of the bull bout on vehicle traffic turning left from Cedar onto Arroyo, given the narrow opening between the sign the city installed last year in the crosswalk and the planned bull bout? Many vehicles struggle with this turn today, but the bull bout will make it even more difficult, especially for large vehicles such as SUVs and garbage trucks. Third, can the process used for obtaining community input regarding this project be improved? Many of us only found out about this project very recently, including the leader of San Carlos Bikes. In fact, today was the first time any of us had a chance to see the actual plans. This opportunity to change such a busy and prominent intersection is rare. When done right, an improvement project such as this not only improves safety for all, but also physically embodies the priorities and goals of the city and its residents, such as a city that is safe for 80 and 80-year-olds, and does so in a way that beautifies San Carlos. It's not clear that this project meets this potential, and therefore it deserves further discussion. For these reasons, I ask the City Council to approve the motion to add this agenda item. Thanks for the opportunity. For these reasons, I ask the City Council to approve the motion to add this agenda item. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
And then we have one more speaker, Sonia Elks. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to echo, I didn't realize that tonight was going to be adding the agenda item. So you won't be discussing, I guess, the proposed changes. I have grave concerns about this intersection at Cedar and Arroyo. I highly suggest a conversation with, I mean, a, a, a public conversation and agendizing this item because as the plans currently stand, I would not feel comfortable in a position of recommending that children bicycle or roll to school if, if the current project goes in as it's planned. There are a few modifications that I've suggested and, and sent to all of you. And I don't know from Public Works if any of those are, are feasible or not. But they would make me feel more comfortable about continuing to promote bicycling in San Carlos. But the current plan does not. It creates a choke point at a high student-trafficked area next to a park near, on the way to five schools and to downtown where bicycles, especially less confident riders and cars are going to unsafely interact without some sort of modifications. So I don't know how to be able to speak. Yeah, I, I, I would just like to say that some modification needs to happen for me to continue recommending that children bicycle to school. It is that serious. This is not a small issue. And I really appreciate that you've agendized this and would look forward to a much more robust public conversation somehow, whether that's through the Transportation Commission, city staff, council members, I'm not sure. So that something like this doesn't happen again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
And then it looks like Kathleen Goforth is raising her hand. Kathleen, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. I just want to second the comments about the need for more public outreach about this. I was not aware. I live two blocks from that intersection and I was not aware that there was anything being planned for that intersection until I happened to look at the agenda for this evening's meeting. So I'm, I'm still not clear on what's being proposed and I would like to see more public outreach about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kathleen.
And, oh, okay, one more hand from John Reithens. John, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi. I sent an email to the council earlier on this topic. And you know, I just want to continue to express my concern with what appears to be a real lack of understanding about what's needed to create safe bicycling in this, in the city. This particular project, as others have stated, has come up without a whole lot of public input. And if you just look at it and use some, some logic, you can see that you're putting bicyclist kids right in front of cars at a major intersection. There's no design there that, that contemplates bike riders and it's in a bike boulevard. And it's just really disappointing. You know, I've been on a number of these meetings making public comment. I've gone to the bike, you know, the, the Bike Planning Commission or, you know, bike planning activities. And we just continue to talk about and pay lip service to this concept of people riding bikes in the city. But all we get out of it is, is signs that no one pays attention to, charros that people don't pay attention to. And there's no real investment in bike infrastructure that's safe for folks or kids to ride on. So it's just, it's really frustrating. I invite the council to get on your own bikes and ride around town. And I'd invite you to, to really look at what truly progressive cities are doing all around the world to make sure that it's safer for folks to ride bikes. And certainly this project is a debacle.
Thank you, John.
And I don't see any other hands.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. All right, so I'm not sure who requested this be put on the agenda. So
Madam Mayor, I, I requested that this be put on the agenda. So I think as, on protocol, I have a, can like just explain my position on this. I think, you know, we can't get into details around the issue itself. But after sort of hearing from the community and taking a walk out to kind of see the, what's been striped and after hearing also that, my understanding is that TNC has not had a chance to look at this project. I, I think it's worthwhile for us to take a look at that. I'm concerned from a public safety standpoint after having seen things. And I understand this has a potential impact for the projects and the grants that we have. But I think it's worth looking at and see if there are some modifications, some minor modifications or some changes that might be able to happen to improve upon this project and put us in a better place around this. So I'd like to agendize this for next meeting to have a discussion, understand what Public Works might be able to come up with and how we might be able to move forward in a better manner on this, in this particular area.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just briefly chime in to agree with Adam. I think that this intersection is a gateway to our major park. We have several schools surrounding it. Young children going to and from school. And it's really important to get this project right. I think that we have heard some very clear concerns tonight and by email. And it appears that some more public engagement would be best. And so I think that I would, I would definitely support bringing it back to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, hi, thank you. And I'll just say this first off. I am an avid cyclist. And I run bike and frequently drive through that intersection. So I'm very familiar with Arroyo and Cedar. And I agree, we do have a lot of work to do as a city to make this a safer, bike-friendly city, specifically on our main arteries. I feel that myself when I'm out there. And I am pretty limited in where I'll let my children ride in this town. And so I view this project, however, as a, something of a failure of communication. I certainly understand the, the concerns that have been raised around people's kind of surprise on, you know, where this project came from, how it came out. I think it was a bit of a disconnect between this project, as I understand it, took four years to kind of go through the design and cycle. And it was vetted through the normal processes at that time. But this summer, we did all that good work or probably for the prior year on our bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which got put in, in place. So I think there might have been a little disconnect around after that plan got put in place. All the kind of outreach on this particular project had previously happened. So I think that might be causing some of the, the concerns around it. And that did cause me to dive in because, you know, I, I would share a concern if this particular project was not consistent in some meaningful way with our bicycle master plan. But I'll say that, you know, on, on my review of this, that's just not the case. These are Class III routes. And they're intended by our own master plan to become Class III-B routes, which is bicycle boulevards. And that's basically an admission that there will not be enough extra width for a dedicated bicycle lane, unless we want to remove, you know, all the street parking down these streets, which, you know, that's a much broader scope than I think any of us are contemplating at this point. So therefore we are in, in the realm where it's a a, the bicycle will be in the lane with traffic. That's just the reality of the width of these streets. And curb extensions are very much an approved solution to the traffic calming that's very consistent with a bicycle boulevard. So all that's to say is I just don't feel like we're in a position to second guess the engineering that went into this, given that it's, it's certainly consistent with a bicycle boulevard. And I definitely hear the public feels like there wasn't enough outreach, enough communication around this. But we have to balance that against the fact that we have a grant here. And, you know, this is more than the eleventh hour. This bid has been put out and accepted and awarded. So we have an awarded bid. And if we're to open that up at this point, as I understand it, that would likely unravel most of this project. So from where I sit, I, I think it's more prudent for us to move forward with this project at this point in time. And if we in some way think it could be improved upon, at least we'll have that investment largely paid for by the grant as a basis. But I will say with my brief review, this plan, although, you know, we can all sit here and think there might be better ways, it was well engineered with a bicycle Class III boulevard intent in mind. And that is consistent with our master bike plan. So I, I don't support opening this up at this point and putting our grant and the whole project in jeopardy.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins? You're on mute. Councilmember Collins?
Sorry about that. Just wanted to say I concur. This is first and foremost a pedestrian safety project. It wasn't meant to be a bicycle safety project. And there's no reason to believe that bicyclists will be less safe. We can make changes after the fact. But this project has actually been going on for seven years. There were letters of, of support from members of the community and the school district saying that this was not a safe intersection. So this grant process goes back to 2014. The project is funded, it's ready to go. The, the downstream effects, the potential negative effects of not going forward this, this project because of eleventh-hour concerns or issues are from people that decided that right now, they're, they don't like the project, I think is, really would set a horrible example going forward. If anybody wants to talk to me later about it, I'm happy to talk to them.
Thank you, and, thank you, Councilmember Collins. So from, from my perspective, I, I also am an avid bicyclist and walker through our community and had been a huge advocate of the master bike head plan. And I recognize that there, there was extensive community outreach at that time. We did discuss in our strategic planning session a want and desire for us to engage in what I call more change management type activities. And I think that's been characterized here by some of the council members, Dugan in particular, around, you know, communication. There might have been kind of a, kind of an expectation that, that wasn't necessarily met. That being said, I believe everyone is doing their best and wants to do the right thing in this situation. I know we all care deeply about our community and we continue to hold safety as a key priority. I do have confidence in our Public Works team and our certified engineers that they have, you know, taken best steps to ensure that the configuration of that intersection meets proper requirements with respect to safety. And I believe making changes this late in, this late stage, it's far past, as I think Dugan, Councilmember Dugan suggested, the eleventh hour. There could be very negative consequences to us if we were to cancel the contract, that type of thing. And I would appreciate perhaps, I see Sarah has her hand up. I'd like to just defer briefly perhaps to Greg on the implications of, of that.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think just generally again, because we, we can only talk about what has happened in essence, not, not discuss any, any potential changes to the project. But what, what I see the issues are is when I'm looking at the, the, the project itself, we have a grant. There's an issue with the grant, whether or not the funding would be available if, if the project's not built the way it's designed and currently approved. There are some potential issues with the contract. If the contract is changed at this point, we may have to reopen. This is why the grant might be in jeopardy. Because we might have to reopen the contract because the contract was bid in a public works bidding process. And redesigning the project could create some issues surrounding the contract. Delaying the contract also could cause us some issues because the, if, if the, since the contract's let, the contractor could be far enough along that, that they committed to resources to assert to the design that's been approved. And that could be an issue for us. And then finally, the the issue of the, the I just lost my train of thought on the last item. It'll probably come to me in a minute if, if people continue to discuss it. But there are, as I've stated, there are several issues that might come into play with a delay or cancellation of, of the, of the contract.
Thank you, Greg. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I was trying to be concise before, but I, I do want to put out some clarifying factors. So number one, I think that where I stand, I would like to bring this back in two weeks and ask for a presentation on some modifications. I know that there's grant funding on the line. I know that a lot of time has been spent already on this project. But what I am wondering is if we can make some modifications at this point to accommodate children on bikes. Because right now, this intersection is designed, expects children to merge into traffic with cars. And that is not safe. And I'm tired of fixing intersections only to create another problem. And if this design proceeds as planned, there's not enough room for children to find space. They will have to go in between vehicles. And that is not safe. And that would be a travesty. And so what I'm asking for is to look at some modifications that could be done, not to, you know, not to cancel the project, but to put paint on the ground, to shave off a little bit of the curb. I want to share with the council that on Friday, Adam and I went to the intersection with our Director of Public Works for over an hour. And we watched how traffic goes through that intersection. And the way it is designed, the lanes are very narrow. And we're going to end up with cars going up on the sidewalk, just like they do in other intersections. And so I'm very concerned with this proceeding as planned. And I would like to, the reason that I'm, I would like to propose bringing it back is to look at modifications. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Greg, I'm sorry, Greg, Jeff? My understanding is that the school district has been involved with this for, for some time. Can you comment on where that stands?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to talk with the superintendent this afternoon. And we met with the the transportation resources that they have on Friday. So we've gotten a good perspective. The superintendent, you know, reminded me that you know, that this project really started from the sense in the community that it was very unsafe for pedestrians at that corner. And so she, she seemed to be, you know, very satisfied with sort of where we're going here in that perspective. And then, you know, the, the school district is another public entity, I think, has probably a good understanding of how these processes work. And that none of us should, should feel in any way, shape or form, you know, committed to these particular, this particular set of changes, right? I mean, they, they date back, as Councilmember Dugan said, a number of years now. And that's just because of how the design process and applying for grants works, that, you know, that it may not be the latest and greatest. But that's just not really possible for us to achieve. So we should, we should stick at it and not be afraid to make changes if they occur. In, in hearing Councilmember McDowell's comments a moment ago, I could, I could float another idea too, that just sort of occurred to me as she was talking that might help. And, and just to put it in context, and so the public understands, because a contract's been awarded, the list of potential changes that we could make is very much constrained. But, but that doesn't mean there isn't a list. But also, we're in the position where time is very much of the essence and costing us money. And so one potential approach would be that perhaps if we are, if the project is continuing forward and it's basically underway now, perhaps the staff could work with the mayor and the vice mayor on this particular project to explore any potential changes that would not put the grant funding in jeopardy. And, and, you know, if those changes And, and, you know, if those changes remain within the overall scope of the budget, that we just move forward with them, you know, if the engineers, you know, concur, and, and of course, you know, that, that would be kind of paramount. Then we could just, you know, keep, kind of keep doing this as we roll forward with the project. If there were other changes that we could potentially make without losing grant funding, but goes over the current project budget, then at that time, perhaps the mayor and the vice mayor would recommend that we come back to council for a discussion. Just a, just another option for, for you all in terms of thinking about moving this project forward.
Great.
Madam Mayor, I remembered that, I remembered my final point, Madam Mayor, and that was the, that was what something that Jeff touched on. Because we've had engineers sign off on this design as a safe design. And we want to be careful that any changes that we make are signed off by engineers. If it is possible to make changes after you let a contract, a change orders are contemplated, but they're not redesign type change orders. They're more like some minor changes that the engineers sign off on as a safe change to the design. So I think that's kind of the, if the project goes forward as it is, there is an opportunity to make some potential changes, provided that the engineers agree that the changes are safe and it fits in the requirements of the grant project.
Okay, so Greg, what I'm hearing you say, I think is that there could be room for potentially minor change orders, but nothing significant or major. Is that?
Yeah, a change order can't redesign the project. A change order can, can make some changes, you know, like an example. I think there was an example, you know, a slight, you know, widening of a lane or something like that is not redesigning the project. But we have to take, we have to get the engineers to sign off on those changes.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Dugan, I saw your hand up and it went away. Did, did you want to make a comment or?
You know, I was just going to ask, would, would Jeff or another member of the staff just be able to briefly summarize the public outreach? And kind of the engagement that did happen on this by way of the city council and the TNC commission?
Stephen, do you want to talk to that?
So certainly, good, good evening. Steve Machida, Public Works Director, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. And yes, just kind of a little bit of history. This project is a fairly lengthy project, that's I understand. I think Councilmember Collins had indicated, you know, this really was started probably in 2014. I think at the time, staff was trying to cobble something together. At that time, staff had been working very closely with the school district. I think this was a safe route to school. I think there had probably over several, several times, the project was trying to, tried to move forward with, you know, subtopic grant funds. Unfortunately, I believe it was a three time, if I'm not mistaken, that we were turned down. Subsequently, in, I believe, 2016, I think we were able to cobble something together, you know, with the support of the school district that this project actually moved forward. And essentially, as, as we call it, the intersection would be squared up. So at that time, we were able to get the grant funds. So we actually had to go through a process with the, the application and we had to draw it up. And so that was kind of included in a, in a package to the city council at that time to kind of prove they, and provide a resolution supporting the, the application as well as all the support letters that we received from the various principals, school district, PKA members, school district board members, et cetera. And essentially, it, you know, has taken quite a bit of time. I think during that time, you know, we were looking back in the TNC minutes. Unfortunately, from probably 2016 to actually 2018, we really couldn't find anything other than just the, kind of the documentation, documentation. Then in 2018, that's essentially, that's when we, in 2017, we actually heard that we got the grant. And so we moved forward with a selection of a design engineer. That item went through to city council. Unfortunately, you know, I have, once I had thought that this item had gone before TNC. Unfortunately, looking through all the minutes during the 18 and 19, I found that it had not. And so, but it was discussed as part of the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. It was included in that project. I think as council members kind of probably recall, you know, we did a quite extensive outreach in the, in the bicycle master plan. We went through, had several workshops. I think they had about six or seven pop-ups like at the farmer's market and EDAC and several other locations. And, and then subsequently, you know, the ultimate adoption of the bicycle master, master plan in 2020, June 2020. So, you know, the, the design itself, as I mentioned earlier, in 2016, we came up with the, the plans that was approved. And so that's what the, the grant was really based upon. And so as, as the city attorney has indicated, you know, we move forward with that design because that, that's essentially what we received, a $500,000 grant. As the attorney indicated, you know, I'm, I'm a little reticent to actually make major changes to the design in fear that we could possibly lose the grant altogether. And basically, the 500,000 really only covers about half, half the construction cost of the project itself. So maybe to summarize, Council Dugan, you know, it's unfortunate, yes, we, we probably failed to actually bring this item to TNC most recently. Especially, you know, after we did do the, the, you know, extensive outreach in the bicycle master plan. But it was included in bicycle master plan and it has been identified, you know, as using the curb extension, as they call it, in the bike master plan. And, and that, that was our intention right from the start.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Councilmember Rack, thank you for your patience.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me lower my hand here. So I, I just want to say, it seems like there's not enough support for this to move forward. I understand that it's disappointing that the TNC has not had a chance to look at this. And I just had two suggestions. One, I think Jeff had suggested sort of maybe some minor modifications and the vice mayor and the mayor may be looking at it. I just want to, as long as, since Sarah and I have discussed this issue, I just want to make sure that there, there's no, I have no problems with the two of you looking at it. I just want to make sure there's no Brown Act issues that come into play. And so as long as the city attorney is good with that, just, I just raised that as a potential issue. And then secondly, I would, wanted to see if my colleagues would be willing to look at potentially, once the project is completed, to maybe look at if we could make some minor changes afterwards. It sounds like that wouldn't jeopardize the grant and potentially take a look at it to see once, once things are in place at that point, to take a look and see if we might make some improvements upon the design. That's an alternative.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Greg, can you address Councilmember Rack's question about the Brown Act issue and setting up an ad hoc subcommittee?
Well, I, I'll have to, you know, each, each one of these Brown Act issues are kind of fact dependent. So I obviously will be compliant with the Brown Act. It doesn't have to be the, the mayor and the vice mayor on that, on that committee. But so I would suggest that if the council's going to do that, that, that we further discuss to make sure we don't have a problem like that. But I don't, I, I mean, I think the issue is that people apparently maybe have already talked about, about the, the item. And I, I'll just make sure that people who are on this potential subcommittee haven't already been involved in other aspects of, of their other subcommittees that might cause a conflict there.
Yeah, I, I haven't talked to any other council members about this particular item until this evening's meeting, just so you're aware, Greg.
Okay.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I certainly support looking at this project on the other side, or if there are changes that can be made in, through the change order process to improve it by all means. My, my most, the, the, the greatest concern I have is just us trying to kind of engineer it on the fly here. Obviously, we'd need engineering input again. And, and I, I just want to, I, I address Vice Mayor McDowell's concern directly about the safety of, of this design. And this is just, you know, I'm no traffic engineer, but I am an avid cyclist. And I'll just say, it's, it's actually, the intent is to hold the lane as a bicyclist. It's actually, what, what's, what's least safe is to move from parked cars, around parked cars into traffic, back out in, you know, into where other cars will be parked. And in particular, what's dangerous is when you're at a four-way stop, if, if you don't take the lane as a bicyclist, and I, I would, I train my own children in this. You have to take that lane on a four-way stop. Because what's really dangerous is if a car turns right on you, well, you're over there. That's actually how a lot of bicyclists get very hurt. So I would just say, like, one change I would particularly support is I saw a member of our public, Sonia maybe, said we should put signs through that actually encourage the cyclist to take the lane. Because that is the intent of that street. The sheer arrows that already exist on Arroyo are saying bicyclists be in traffic, go down the lane. And so I, you know, that, that, if I thought we were doing something here that was particularly unsafe, I would definitely share your concerns. But as, as a cyclist, I will just say, y, y, you actually need to take that lane. That is the safest thing to do if there is not room for a dedicated bike lane. And there are parked cars like there are in both these streets. So I just wanted to share that aspect. But I certainly support anything we can do around the edges of this or even on the other side of this project. You know, we have a new master plan and we got a lot of work to do. So I'm looking forward to finding good budget and good planning on thoroughly executing this bicycle master plan that we've worked so hard on.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Greg, I just want to do a quick check-in with you with respect to, I understand we have to do limited discussion and we're starting to go back and getting other requests for comment, third, three deep here. So it, it sounds like there's not support for the agenda item as proposed, but there may be support to set up an ad hoc subcommittee. But I'm not sure about that. So where do we go from here, Greg? Any suggestions?
Yeah, you know, because this is limited to just whether or not to place something on the agenda. And I think we've talked, talked, you know, the council's talked quite a bit about the subject matter. And because I wanted to allow you to kind of form opinions about the nature of the project. But the, the choice you have is to whether to agendize it or agendize something related to what's on the agenda or not tonight. So I think we could have a motion that, that could generate the issue of bringing something back or not. And there's probably a couple of, you know, granular changes you could make. We've historically appointed subcommittees to study things from agenda setting, subject matters. So that's definitely something that, that you could do tonight. Set up that subcommittee.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, so yeah, so I'm, so I'm not hearing support for the item as it's proposed for future agenda. And so unless there's an alternative proposal at this point, the discussion, I guess we, we close the discussion unless there's support for that subcommittee, Greg. Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
That's right. Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't know if you're looking for a motion to create the subcommittee. My only worry with doing the subcommittee is that it's not super transparent to the community. And we've already kind of faltered in that area with getting the community involved. So that's why I wanted the modifications to be brought back to the full council for us to consider, so that the community could hear that discussion. But I, if you're looking for a motion, I'm, I'm not sure what, what, I see Ron has his hand up too.
Just to be clear, the sub, the subcommittee would not be able to make a decision. So the subcommittee's charged usually in these circumstances to make a recommendation. And ultimately, if, if a recommendation comes back, it could come back to the council after the subcommittee's looked at it. That's generally how we've done it.
And if I could just clarify, because I recognize we did not have a subcommittee on the agenda tonight. So what I was just suggesting is that, I was suggesting that staff would simply choose to reach out to the mayor and the vice mayor to include them in our discussions about this particular project and any potential change orders we might be able to make within the spirit of, you know, what the community and the council has asked for in terms of making improvements to this project, which would be, you know, something that I could do anytime at, at my discretion. But I just wanted to kind of see if the council was comfortable with that and they felt like it might be helpful.
I misunderstood your suggestion then, Jeff. My apologies.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Greg. Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, I, I, I like Jeff's idea. I was going to suggest we just do a post, a post-project subcommittee to look at making changes. But as long as there are some potential minor modifications that are allowed, I have no problem with the subcommittee working with staff. And since Adam and Sarah have already been on site with Steve Machida, I, to, to me, it seems logical that they would be the subcommittee. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to interfere with anybody else who wants to be in the subcommittee, but that just seems pretty logical to me.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack, I see you took yourself off mute.
I'm still trying to figure out what we're talking about today. But no, and I'm fine, you know, I appreciate Ron's comments. And I, I would just defer to you, Madam Mayor, about how you want to structure it. I, I think I'm fine with either, you know, I, I understand the vice mayor's point about transparency. And, and I think if Jeff wants to reach out separately with people, I, I guess I would defer to you to figure out the best way to structure it. But I think, I would just hope that maybe post the, everything, we can at least take a look at it at, at a minimum. And how we get there, I'm comfortable with your, your decision on that.
Okay, so I, I hear that. Thank you. So I, I think, Jeff, if we could, you know, just follow up on your recommendation and, and move forward with that. And again, you know, we, we discussed this at the strategic retreat, wanting to make sure we had, what I, again, what I referred to as change management at the time, we proved that in our minutes, just to make sure we bring the community along in some of these changes. So it sounds like this wouldn't be a formal subcommittee, but you would just keep people informed and that type of thing. And I, I did spend quite a bit of time on this issue this past week, so I feel very much up to date on where things stand, so I'd be happy to help.
Okay, I think as a next step, I will, the city attorney and I will reach out to the mayor and the vice mayor. So we could talk through any potential Brown Act issues before we get into any sort of substance and how, you know, what potential options we have to solve that or firewall those issues, I think. As, as, yeah, so I think that's probably a good next step, because obviously we want to be able to move quickly.
Yes, understood.
Can, can I request, sorry, Madam Mayor, it, it requests, if, I think there was enough support to have a sort of a post-mortem around this project to have a, a, agendize a discussion after that. But just, can we just get that clear for the record? And then I'm happy to, like, you know, obviously you guys can work out as, as Jeff has suggested. No, I'm happy to move that, move that we have a, a post-mortem discussion or post-completion of the project discussion at the council level.
I'm happy I'll lend my support to that from the staff, having talked it through, yeah.
Yes, I would agree. I mean, this is what, why I brought it up at the strategic retreat. So this is very much in alignment with the spirit of that, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so with that, I, I think we know, and Crystal, I'm sorry, was there any additional comments from the public? I got a note from you that there may have been some additional comments from public.
Looks like they lowered their hands since then.
Okay, all right. So I think with that, we move into closed session and we have a couple of items there. And then Greg and the city manager and I can then come back to join the meeting. Is that the way that this will go?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Are we getting invited into the room?
Yes.
No?